I mean, they're trying to.
Yeah, but now for this.
We backdate?
No.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
I see those. Twelve thirty one. Project is out, so they get a ball drink. They come about December first.
That's not bad.
Yeah.
How the rest of the operations?
Where is everybody? They think this is Washington DC.
I'm well, I think. Some people. So.
Yeah, we're on.
Are you guys good?
Good to go?
Yeah.
All right.
But I'm good.
Ready. I haven't heard them.
Yep, I just heard it. Oh, all right. We're gonna start. Uh, we'll call the order of the city council business meeting for Thursday, January second, twenty twenty five. It's six PM. Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Brown. Cool.
Here.
Livingston. Mineki.
Here.
Mayor Phillips.
Sign here. We do have a quorum, so we'll move on. Item number two is pledge allegiance. Would you please rise and say the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the world.
Item number three is approval of the agenda. Anybody like to move any of the consent agenda items to the regular agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the agenda by cool, seconded by my key. All those favor say hi.
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 All is supposed same. Motion carries. Item number four is welcome of guests and public comment. Thank you for being here tonight. And being online. Uh, we'd open up the dais at this point in time for non-agenda items. If you want to address council and myself. Uh, we'll give you three minute time limit. Realize we can't take action on those because it's they're not on the agenda. Uh, to take action on them would be a violation of open meetings law. Don't want to do that. Also, if you'd like to comment on any item in the consent agenda, now would be the time. Anybody online or here in the audience? Harry, none will go ahead and move on. Item number five is consent agenda. We have expenditures, tax abatements. We have the December nineteenth, twenty twenty four minutes of the regular city council meeting. We have a renewal of a Class E retail alcohol license for Fairway. We have a resolution to approve pay as but number five to GTG construction for the city hall renovation project. And we have correspondence. Can I get a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion by my key, seconded by Baker. Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah.
Mineki.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item six is old and new business for consideration discussion of possible action. Item A underneath that is resolution authorizing the city of Norwalk to join. A twenty eight E agreement with Creator Des Moines Commission to visitors, visitors bureau. Which is called Catch Des Moines. So our hotel operators have asked us to uh, join Catch Des Moines. That's the metro areas commission visitors bureau. Uh, they will add Norwalk's hotels to their list and when events are coming to the whole metro area. And that those events include tournaments at the Greg Young Sports Campus. So. We have Trina Flack. Here from Catch Des Moines, I believe Laura Nichols and Brock Conrad. Uh, they're here from Catch Des Moines. Holly, I'm gonna let you take it from here.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you, Trina, and everybody who came from Catch Des Moines. I know we've been working with their group for a couple of years. Just trying to kind of understand how it works and how we could benefit from it. But of course, up until this point, we didn't have any open hotels. Now we have one um, open and fully operating, the Fairfield Inn Suites by Marriott will soon have the True by Hilton. Um, next summer or fall. And then, of course, we've got Norwalk Central and the sports campus and all these really um, great event uh, venue places and or Fieldhouse. That will be drawing, you know, thousands of people in um, a million people a year in for various events. And we really needed to be a part of this, this organization and part of this twenty eight E agreement in order to help our hotels and our event venues. Um, be able to secure some of these uh, different conventions and events that are looking for places to come in the metro area or in the, in the region. And they just have such a great track record of being able to recruit and market and draw those into the area. And I did receive a couple of reports. I apologize. I didn't add them into this um, agenda item, but. From the Fairfield Inn and Suites owner, they actually sent me reports of all of the different RFPs that Catch Des Moines. Um, that they were able to secure for them. And it was just dozens and dozens for each of the last couple of years. So it's, it's definitely um, has a return on investment when it comes to. Dollar for dollar, which right now is really important to all of our local businesses. And this will help our restaurants and the retailers and everybody else in that area. So. Um, I will let Trina or whoever else from Catch Des Moines would like to talk a little bit more about what they do maybe.
Yeah.
Thanks, Holly. Trina Flack with Catch Des Moines. Um, you know, we stood before you right about a year ago, I think, and, and. Kind of went in depth with what we do and, and how we support the city. And like Holly mentioned, we've been working with the city staff, Holly and Luke and. And crew for a couple of years and uh, we really just want to support Norwalk and, you know, visitors don't know the city boundaries between one metro city to the next. And. As we look ahead and, and securing new events and supporting the events that are already on our books. Um, you guys have a great product here and, and we want to fill the hotel and support the businesses. Uh, we do that through national sales efforts. We do that through uh, local catch champions. We do that through. Tunnel marketing efforts with um, ad placement and website and, you know, social media and everything that goes along with that. Um, I'm happy to get really in the weeds. Even do a one-on-one with you guys if you'd like to. Um, along the way, our team can come down and figure out how we can uh, sell open dates to a facility side. But happy to answer any questions and really just say thank you for the support along the way and all your efforts.
What discussion do we have, counsel? If any.
Sounds like a pretty worthwhile endeavor to me.
I agree. Any public comment either here or, or online? All right, hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
Motion. Second.
Second. Okay, motion by cool, seconded by Baker. Any further discussion? Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Cool.
Yeah.
Mineki.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
All right, most carries. Can they do this thing? Yeah, thanks for coming down. I know you weren't here for very long, but.
Well, happy new year.
Happy new year.
We just lost three fourths of our audience.
Geez, what did we say? Who did we say? Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, item six B is resolution initiating rezoning, referring the rezoning proposal to the Norwalk Planning and Zoning Commission and setting a public hearing regarding the proposed. Zoning amendment to amend the Orchard, Orchard Hills planned unit. Development regarding R four high density residential uses in PUD parcel number one. So parcel number one is where the water tower is, I believe. Uh, the developer liked to construct a fifty unit senior housing project and they'd like. A zoning change from C one to R four, I believe. Luke?
Uh, well, sort of correct. Um, not to correct you, Mayor. Um. The uh, the PUD actually lists two zoning classifications for that. We've got several PUDs around town that'll do that. It'll say it can be either or. But then it says before development occurs, you have to lock in which it's gonna be. Um, so this one does currently allow R four on it. Um, as well as C one, and they are wanting to us to lock in an R four zoning so they can do this project on the southern portion of that parcel. Uh, they've only acquired that, I think it's two point seven five acres. Um, that's on the screen there. Um, it's a. Uh, three-story building and then a couple of townhome um, units to the back um, against the water tower. Um. So uh, the remainder of that site would still be that C one or R four. Um. Then available for purchase development uh, as the community sees fit.
Can we do that? When they bring it back to the, to the P and Z and also to do that property as only your C two or. Or. Our purpose for that is just the.
Yeah, uh, so at that point in time. Likely the proposal, I don't know this one specifically, but I've had it when we've done our ones where we had a piece of property that. The developer felt it could lend itself to a couple of different things. And they wanted to have that flexibility to do a couple of different things. And the city wanted to give them that flexibility, but we didn't also want to just open the barn doors to allow for anything, right? So. Um, it's very similar to the northern parcel of uh, Hugh Century Crossing. The piece that's north of Chatham on the east end, where it could have been industrial, it could have been a single family thing. It could have been. R four, it could have been some kind of town center commercial. Uh, so we really kind of, we threw the kitchen sink at that one. This one was just a, we're gonna. Look at a high-density piece or that kind of lower um, intensity commercial that C one is. Yeah, the, the Hugh Century Crossing one, we set the south half of that one. The north half still needs to be set. Similarity of this will set part of it and the rest will still need to be. Refined.
Is the area north of this, is there enough room for commercials along that?
Um, I don't.
This gonna wipe that out?
I don't have a definitive. Um. I don't have a definitive dimension on that. Um, my general kind of thought when they showed us the layout and looking at it was that it would. Um. But. Luke Nelson.
Trying to follow is what was, what's your orientation on that? And how does that lay into the larger? So, okay, so, so right here with this picture, right, depicts a water tower.
Yeah.
So if we go straight to the right. As we face it, right, straight to the right, that's where it'll be, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that leaves that frontage across.
Yes, but if you look at, if you go back to the um, exhibit, their property line is to the north of that. Um, cause they've got that one townhome unit that uh, kind of goes a little north of the town. So it's ninety-three, I can measure it here. They gave some dimensions on there, but they don't have the remainder dimension.
How skinny would that make the?
Yeah, I'll tell you that here real quick. This is referring to. It would leave about a hundred and fifty feet of frontage.
About a hundred and fifty feet of depth.
Yes. That's.
What are those other businesses along the strip there? What are they? Generally speaking, how deep are they? You know, the other ones.
Um.
Just constructed.
You know. There's not, there's not a lot more on North Avenue. Um.
Will that be enough room? If it was going to be developed that way?
It, um.
If I. Sorry. Hello? I apologize. I didn't mean to butt in. My name's Barry Accountis. I'm with Woda Cooper Development. We're the ones proposing to do the apartments there for the seniors. On the, on the uh, topic of is there enough frontage to be developed? Um, the broker went to the owner and they discussed this in depth and they believed it was, or they wouldn't split the lot this way. Just, just. Just for, for what I've known and, and what I've been told.
Is there a concept regarding this whole plot? It's all owned by one person, I would assume.
They would be splitting off the townhome piece and buying it separate. And then the remainder would be owned by. The uh, the current owner and I'm assuming still for sale. Um, I'm trying to get another measurement for you. Ed, give me a second here.
They probably wouldn't leave a chunk of land where they could use it. Well, unless we get more apart, that I don't really give. Yeah.
Um, for reference, the, um. The. Sunset, uh, Sunset Crest, uh, where Jimmy Johns is at and everything. To the back of a building is, from the street is ninety feet. Um, so you'd have building space, you'd have to, you'd have to do side by side. Um, you wouldn't have. Likely in a scenario where you'd have a building with parking in front of it. Um, unless we did, we can always do a P U D amendment to lessen things. Um, also with that drive there, maybe there's an access easement that we. You know, put in place where they can use that drive and have some parking come off of that, but, um.
The next, the commercial. We only have so much limited commercial and it's weird just whittling away at it. With each one of these little pieces.
So. Remind me. If council doesn't ask this, what is the next step for the developer?
The developer can proceed with. A, I guess, the question would be for Jim because we're in the middle of approving our, a new petition amendment process. Um. But they could petition, um. Put together a petition and uh, present that to council.
Yeah, there's two different methods, either develop, either the city council directing it or whether. Or uh, the property owner initiating it. And current. Requirements for property initiate, property owner initiated rezonings would be. Uh, at least half of the, half of the property within and half the property abutting it. Uh, consenting and requesting to it. Uh, and that's been changed to what?
I don't believe we changed that aspect of it. We just changed what uh, the, the people appealing a decision.
Yeah, the appealing. So at this point in time, if we haven't affected that, because I knew that was kind of due to, to do that. Sorry. The to-do list to uh, discuss changing that, but right now it would require a petition by the owner of. Of the property plus fifty percent of the people abiding it. Of the neighboring property owners. And uh. The, the notice that was put, put together that LA gave us the, the southern two point seven five acres of this, of the current lot is. What they're looking at for rezoning. That's not completely accurate, but it's approximately two point seven five acres.
That's just what we're looking at right now?
Yes. Where, where the, where the development is and that's where the rezoning would occur. So the north part isn't getting rezoned. Uh. Without further action, the council in the future. But it's zoned the same way into PUD right now.
Right now, the P U D says it can be either or. And that it directs. Staff essentially to process a amendment to the PUD to define which one it's going to be. So I don't. I don't know.
Brian, I think.
How that works if a situation where he said, we don't want to do that.
Right.
Cause it's kind of so, it's. My opinion would be it has the right to be R four now and we're just. Picking which one so that you don't have someone deciding to operate a C one business on this R four project.
Okay. Uh, to refer it to the P and Z would take. Uh, all council members that are here today, because it takes the majority of the council. And we just have three here, so it takes three positive votes to refer it to. To P and Z. Keep in mind, this is just for the initial consideration. Come back before you after P and Z makes a recommendation, whether they rezone or not. Uh, at that point in time. Whether it being in a PUD amendment to a PUD, uh. You could also probably put some other restrictions in place to make sure. Uh, they're, they're certain on what project they're doing. Uh, so that you just don't rezone to R four and get something you weren't expecting. I mean, we had that with the Legacy Circle last year. And uh, you could probably put some restrictions in there at that point in time. Uh, that you were comfortable with, or you have, once again, a chance to not vote for it at that point.
You could also, I believe, at that point in time, what's it being in a PUD? Make the northern piece just commercial.
Yeah.
So you can pull out the R four from the remainder piece. Um, we could also. If developability was a concern on it, we could. Do limited setbacks on that northern piece to um, to allow more of the lot to be usable. I would probably say wait for that point until a development came forward, but you could, you could do things with the remnant piece to try to make it more. Usable, more marketable, uh, and to limit it to commercial.
Right now, we're sending through them to look at that P and Z. Yeah, and they'll come back with a recommendation, one way or the other or something.
Correct.
And then at that point, we can take a look at this and we can put whatever restrictions we want to. On. The approval of this, so we make sure that. While we approve it, it's being built. And then the other piece, if I understand you correctly. We could go ahead and, and say that it has to be commercial.
Yeah, I believe that's part of that.
I, I think, I think you could as far as many PUD, it's kind of a uh, negotiation since the owner. Of the lot owns the entire ground, it'd be a lot easier to have that ask. Uh, and I think probably you could also ask P and Z. Uh, P and Z to not only consider the rezoning, but also to consider including that with it, you know, to discuss that.
It would be pertinent for council to make that direction to specifically to look at that.
Yes.
We have to amend this. What we're doing right now to include that.
Well, if you make a refer. You, you would make a motion and second vote to refer to. Uh, P and Z to consider rezoning, but along with that, you want them to consider. Uh, the possibility of limiting the remainder of the lot to a specific commercial.
Can we also, can, can we also suggest modifying the, the northerly setback twenty-five feet down to something? Smaller to make that.
We could, as part of that, writing that PUD, we can make it smaller. I don't know if. On their purchase, if they've got that property line locked in, it sounded like. From their perspective, maybe it was and both parties were agreeable to where it was at, but from a staff perspective, you know, we're always supportive of. Using property as much as we can. So if we could do something and they wanted and felt like it was reasonable for them to reduce the. Setback to the north, so that property line could shift down some, we would be willing to do that. Um, similarly, we can address that on the commercial side and let that property, let that building get closer.
And this is going to be a senior project.
This is senior, yes.
So. Now I'm just, I'm. Yeah, it is. Uh, my, my only concern would be, and something that they may want to look at is. The far west unit. Is a long ways away from park. And for a senior to, for somebody's senior. To walk all that way with groceries is, was, is a long haul.
And where are the pickleball courts? I mean, if you're a senior.
If, no, one thing I, I would throw with that is. You know. All of this gets muddied together when we look at stuff. The one thing I have been confident is that the site plan that would come forward will likely. Deviate somewhat from this. Um, I've not had fire do a review of this, like no.
Okay.
This has been the zoning proposal that's come through us. So we still have a lot of staff eyes that need to get looked at it to see what works and what doesn't.
All right, I would make a motion to uh, refer this to P and Z. And included in that to try to. Be about keeping the commercial. Along the north side. As part of. As part of the.
And now second act, because I think it's a great idea. It gives the owner an opportunity to kind of. Yeah, yeah. Do a little negotiation with P and Z.
All right, so I got a motion from Baker. Second from Cool. Did you get the whole thing, Lindsay?
I did.
As amended, okay. Uh, any further discussion or public comment? Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Mineki.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
All right, motion carries. Item six C is a resolution to set a public hearing for January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. For approval and adoption of a revenue purpose statement for expenditure of fee revenues from proposed electric and natural gas franchise fees. So this is setting a public hearing. Uh, for our implementation of franchise fees, which is going to be a direct replacement for the one percent local option sales tax. Gene Kelly. Got anything?
Uh, just that it will be a revenue neutral. Um, at this point with the one percent. Because we won't be charging that in the lost. So it'll be revenue neutral to citizens.
Yes.
Make that up.
Cool.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Any discussion from council or public comment?
If, if I could, I'll point out a little bit that. Uh, I think initially, what'll, what you can expect is you have to adopt this res- resolution, this revenue purpose statement tonight. Uh, or the next meeting you'll adopt that, then you'll set public hearings for the ordinance to pass actually a franchise agreement with Mid-American for. Gas and electric at that point in time by adopting, previously adopting this revenue. Purpose statement, then uh, you're authorized to have franchise fees within that ordinance. Uh, franchise fees can be up to five percent. Uh, the, I think the proposal is that one percent council certainly could go higher than up to five percent if they wanted to. But right now, the revenue purpose statement, uh, that wording in the revenue purpose statement is going to be published is. Directly out of the code. The code allows us to adopt certain uses for this money. It's limited to those uses. The code does allow us to go beyond. Uh, what's listed in the proposed revenue state, purpose statement that's in the code, as you could have like property tax relief in there also. Uh. Pro- projects designed to prevent or mitigate future disasters. Energy conservation measures. Property tax abatements or building permit fee abatements. Uh, but we just uh, included in there the property tech. Uh, what, what we have listed there, the other uses. So we've eliminated those others. Now at the time of passage of. Of the revenue purpose statement, if council wanted to eliminate some of those items, you could. Uh, by me saying that, I'm certainly not recommending that, but you uh, you certainly could. If we leave our options open, right?
Yeah.
Yes. The, the other thing, this is probably the fairest exchange because the sales tax is basically paid by everybody. And this will come pretty close to being paid by. Everybody. That's right. So. But. We don't, we don't really have a lot of choice. Yeah, but I think one of the benefits to understand with a franchise fee, as uh, Gene said, it was revenue neutral because. When you add the franchise fee to the, the bills. That is not subject to the one cent sales tax, whereas if you don't, then it, it, you know, there is a one cent sales tax there. Uh, so citizens are gonna pay the same amount, whether this is adopted or not, but with the franchise fee, all the citizens' tax money. Uh, you know, that up represented that one percent comes to the city coffers and the city spends it. Whereas if it was through the uh, sales tax, it would be dispersed according to sales tax numbers where we would not get a hundred percent of that.
Over Warren County, right?
Yeah.
Motion.
Second. All right, motion by Baker, seconded by Mineki to approve resolution as presented. Any further discussion? Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Mineki.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six D is the second reading of an ordinance amending the zoning code of the city of Norwalk Iowa. To zoning petitions, residential architectural standards, district names, city-owned walls and fences and PUD amendments. So we had a public hearing and council approved the first reading of this ordinance. Uh, amendment at our last meeting. Luke, you got anything to add?
Nothing new.
All right, any discussion from council or public comments?
This is the one where we were looking at the corner lots, right?
Uh.
That's two.
Two more.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Two. I'm good.
Okay.
Motion.
All right, uh, boy. Okay. Uh, so I got a motion by Baker, seconded by Cool to approve second reading. Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Cool.
Yeah.
Mineki.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six E is the second reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances. City Norwalk Iowa to permit tattoo studios as a use in the C two community commercial zoning district. So we had a public hearing and council approved the first reading of this ordinance amendment. At our last meeting. Luke, anything to add?
No, sir.
All right, any discussion from council or public comment? I get a motion to approve the second reading.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Cool, seconded by Mineki. Uh, any further discussion? Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Mineki.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
All right, most carries. Item six F. Second reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Norwalk Iowa regarding requirements for fences on corner and double frontage lots. So we had public hearing and council approved the first reading of this ordinance amendment at our last meeting. Uh, Luke, anything to add?
No, sir.
All right, Ed.
I was just gonna comment to you, Mayor, it's likely to all vote no. If I vote no, does that just kill this thing or?
Yeah.
Is that right?
So which?
It requires a majority of the council on every reading. I wonder if anybody would want to. Table flip.
I wonder if anybody would want to table flip? So, am I hearing a motion to table to the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Cause I, I, I don't think this is a good idea to do this.
All right. So I got a motion to table to the next meeting from Cool, a second by Baker. Uh, let's just do all those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
All is supposed to say, we're tabled until the next meeting. Thank you, Ed.
You're welcome.
Item six G is a resolution approving the final consideration of an ordinance, uh, of, and ordinances amending the code of ordinances of the city of Norwalk, Iowa by adding and, and acting thereto a new section to chapter one oh four to establish a northeast service area benefited sewer district and to adopt connection fees therein. So Norwalk's built a pumping station along Eightieth and is now going to establish sewer district to help pay for the pumping station and so, and associated piping. Uh, project is opening up over three hundred acres for development with sewer now available. Uh, total estimated cost is two million dollars with the fees proposed at sixty-five hundred dollars per acre, followed by an annual increase of a hundred dollars per acre. So I should also add that a portion of this sewer district is in a, a development by Hubble. And we have an agreement with Hubble regarding the list station. Staff's working with Hubble to reconcile the benefit of sewer district and the development agreement. That is still true. Okay. Uh, you may recall that our initial plans were a smaller list station, station to serve an isolated area. But we revised our approach to serve a larger area, thinking long-term. Tony or Wayne? Tony, you got anything to add?
Good summary, Mayor, nothing else to add.
All right, thank you. Uh, discussion or comments from council or public comment? All right.
There was a question. On a previous issue, I got it.
All right, uh, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Cool, seconded by Meinike. Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Cool?
Yes.
Meinike? Baker?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item seven is future agenda items.
Hey, Mayor, before you jump into that, the, there was a chat in here. Robin had asked a question if there's enough frontage for North Avenue. Cause we were talking about the Disneyberg commercial, and that's a hundred and twenty feet. It's my understanding that's enough for up to five lane with a trail on one side. So I was responding to her in the chat, just to let you know that question came.
Okay. Sorry, good question.
Yeah, it was a great question.
Great question, yeah. Okay, item number seven, future agenda items. So the purpose of this item is for council to give direction to staff by way of motion. Have items placed on future agenda. It's not for discussing the merits of the subject matter. It's just to get it on the agenda so that we can. Any future agenda items for tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on. Item eight, uh, council inquiries and staff updates. So I'd like to remind everybody that this portion of the meeting is much less formal. Uh, you may hear some back and forth banner and general joking around. We believe that this can build camaraderie and cohesiveness between staff and council. Uh, but please keep it professional, Luke.
Uh, just a couple of items. I think Gene may be planning to touch on these. Uh, we did get our budget numbers, our valuation numbers from the county. Um, I sent an email out to everybody just to have everybody start to warm up to the idea that that's not like some of the great growth numbers that we've seen in the past, between, uh, the rollback changing and House File seven eighteen, we're certainly seeing an impact where we're going to be looking to work with somewhere between three and four percent of new money versus the eight to ten percent numbers that we've seen in the past. So that's certainly going to have an impact on what we can do this budget season. Uh, second thing, the rollback summary, I had sent out some information I, uh, to council also. This was something that was put out by the Legislative Services Agency. I thought this was an excellent, short, brief white paper that did a pretty good job of summarizing to the legislators. Listen, there are already all kinds of clawbacks in the formulas that do the rollback so that these valuations that come up every couple of years and you see a big jump in valuation, it does not automatically mean that your taxes are going to go up by that amount. Yet I think a lot of people were fooled into thinking that uh, about the time we go into elections. So they tell people they're upset about the taxes, and then we have an election and people see their tax bill went down. Wow, that's weird. But for the formula takes into account those valuation fluctuations. Anyway, this article does a good job of explaining that. It just helps you be a little bit more educated about what all that means. The last thing I want to note, thank you, Ed, for noticing that with only three council members here, and we have one sick, somebody that couldn't be here also. Uh, but realizing that a no vote with three out of the five here will kill a proposal. Thank you for noticing.
You're welcome.
That's all.
Thank you. Uh, Lindsay?
Uh, just the moving day is Monday for our other side of City Hall, um, complete, but we can move in. So come visit maybe Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
That's it.
Uh, Robin? Okay, uh, Gene Strabel?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Holly?
Nothing.
All right, Gene Kelly?
Hi, thank you. Um, just kind of want to touch on some things that Luke had mentioned about our revenues. Uh, we actually did receive those today, which, uh, was great. We got them on time and, um, I don't know if you saw the cityscape today that the league puts out. Um, they talked about how our property taxes are calculated and assessed value versus taxable value and consolidated tax rate. And Luke kind of touched on a little bit of that, but it was aptly titled Clear as Mud. Um, so it is really, um, I think it'd be such a good article for, um, everyone to read, uh, including residents, but um, we did, our numbers show that we have a hundred percent valuations increased by about five point four four percent. Our taxable increased by six point three percent, and then our debt service about seven point nine percent. Um, so we are growing, it's positive, um, in a normal year, uh, but with House File seven eighteen, um, it kind of limits us a bit. Uh, so to give you a perspective, if we were still at the eight, ten limit, we would have about six hundred thousand dollars of new money to work with. Uh, but under the new House File seven eighteen, we, um, are limited to seven sixty-three per thousand in our general fund. So we will have about two hundred thousand dollars of new money to work with. Um, so we'll have some challenges and try to figure out uh, what, you know, what we, um, cr- need and what is critical for each department. And we will be meeting next week, um, having department meetings. Generally, we have done that before now. Um, last year, we had TIF roll off, so we knew it wouldn't be a huge effect um, the first year, but the second year, uh, I think it's an even bigger effect than I thought. Um, so we will be meeting next week with the departments to kind of go over, uh, what the needs are. And, um, on the sixteenth, I will be bringing a budget overview of these numbers as well as uh, the capital improvement plan that I sent out to the finance committee this week. And, um, this process is really going to have to move fairly swiftly. We, we have till April thirtieth to approve the budget, but we have to have numbers to the county by March fifth. So that gives us a limited amount of time with public hearings and publications. So hoping that, um, everybody will, uh, recognize that and, uh, work with us on, on dates that are necessary, uh, to get things done. Um, but, uh, that's all I have for tonight. Um, again, in two weeks, we'll, we'll bring you more, uh, information on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Gene. Can you, can, can you document a little bit about those dates so that we can maybe send them to our legislators to say, hey, you know, House File seven eighteen did this as well?
Pretty skinny window now.
Yeah. Right, thank you. And then?
Thank you.
Well, I wish, like, that developer was, was online here. Some of those, they are the first on the chopping block. Uh-huh.
You're talking about?
Well, the, a large apartment complex or whatever. It's like, well, you know, just not. Yeah, why go there? Why go there? Let's save for commercial. We don't, yeah, whatever. I agree. Uh, and then Luke brought up the Clear as Mud article that, uh, Gene was referring to. That was in an email from the Iowa League of Cities called Cityscapes Eat Pub.
Did you send it out? Yeah, this is what the email, I'll forward it right now.
Okay. Great.
It'll be clear as mud.
It'll be clear as mud. All right. Okay, thank you. Chief Staples?
I have nothing.
All right, thank you. Hey, Tony, what you got?
Nothing here, Mayor, thanks.
All right, thank you. Chief Porter?
Um, just in case anybody missed the press release, we did respond to a structural fire on the twenty-second of December um, on Holly Drive. Um, we were on scene in about three and a half minutes from time of page. It's right around the corner from the fire station. It was a really good response. Uh, we got our first mutually company in about fifteen minutes after the first page. Um, we did get mutually aid from Westin Way to Windsor Heights. We had a really good stop on the, on the incident. Um, there were no injuries to firefighters or civilians, but the family did lose two family pets in the fire, and they did get resources through the Red Cross. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Carrie?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
All right, Luke?
Um, as we kind of expected with ending tax abatement, we did get a lot of permits in, uh, December. Um, just to preface it, our average year permits in December is nine. We had seventy-seven submitted this month. Um, so we've got a bit of work to do. A reminder to council, mayor, city manager, if you get any complaints from builders, we did tell them that, uh, they had until March first to pay, which also means we have until March first to review all of this. So we typically don't get that many dropped on us at once, so our five-day turnaround that we strive for is going to be stretched a little bit as we review all these, but we will work through them as we can. Um, that puts us to three hundred and four permits for calendar year twenty twenty-four, which is the highest permit value we've had since I've been here, and I believe ever. Um, so that's kind of neat, but I also expect our spring to be a little bit lighter, given the influx. So, um, yeah.
Once these are approved, how long do they have before they have to, uh, in other words, when do they have to be built by?
They have until March first to pay for the permit, and then the permit's issued to them. Once it's issued, they have six months essentially to, uh, start construction. And then once they start construction, they have a year from that point in time to finish it.
Okay, so a year and a half.
Yeah.
Cool. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Ed?
So I take it from our conversation about the budget, that scheduling long-term cruises in February would be a good idea.
I don't know.
If you got access to Zoom.
Zoom on a cruise ship. All righty.
No, I have nothing, Mayor.
I am, I am, I am going on a vacation at the end of February, so.
Better get her done.
Exactly.
George got nothing to do.
Brian? Uh, a reminder that I will be zooming for all of my meetings from now till April. Okay. And I am always available on my cell phone. You guys all have my numbers. Feel free to use it. It'll usually get me out of something Deb has me doing anyway.
Jim and I will use your big computer.
There you go.
Something off the, relaxing on the beach or something like that.
Have some zoom.
Yeah.
No, sir.
All right. Uh, I don't really have anything either, but except to say, hope you have a happy new year, and I'm looking forward to twenty twenty-five. Should be a good year.
Yeah.
All right, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, second.
Motion by Baker, seconded by Cool. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is supposed to say, we're adjourned six forty-two. All right, wow, that's about twenty minutes longer than I.